Town meeting members, town officials, guests, and Shrewsbury Cable viewers at home. Good evening. My name is Christopher Mena and it is my privilege to serve as your moderator for this special town meeting. I'm advised by the town clerk that we have a quorum. Accordingly, this special town meeting of January 17th, 2018, is hereby called to order. Would the tellers seated in the auditorium please raise your hands? Would all town meeting members please come forward and take your seats in front of the tellers if you are not already seated in front of them? And if there are any individuals who are not elected town meeting representatives and do not have my specific permission to be seated in front of the tellers, please move to the seats behind the tellers. I have examined the warrant dated December 12th, 2017, and the constable's return of service dated December 13th, 2017, and find both to be in order. I ask for your unanimous consent to dispense with the reading of the warrant and the constable's return. Hearing no objections, it is so voted unanimously. I now invite you to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing for a moment of silence following the pledge. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember two former town meeting members who have passed away since we last convened in September of last year. Mark Harris, a town meeting member who represented Precinct 1 from 1987 to 2016, passed away on October 13th, 2017. Mark also served on the Finance Committee from 1988 to 1992. Our condolences go out to Mark's wife Nancy and their family. John Donahue, a town meeting member who represented Precinct 3 for more than 60 years, most recently from 2002 to 2015, passed away on January 5th. Our condolences to Jack's family. Please join me in a moment of silence for Mark R. Harris and John K. Donahue. Thank you and please be seated. Seated here to the stage on my right are town clerk Sandra Wright, town council Stephen Madouse, Assistant Town Manager Kristen Lass, Finance Committee Chair Patrick Pitney, Finance and the members of the Shrewsbury Finance Committee. Seated on the stage to my left are Town Manager Kevin Mizikar and Selectmen Chair John LeBeau, Vice Chair Moira Miller, Jim Kane, Mo DiPaolo, and Beth Cassavant. I would also like to call your attention to the town officials, department heads, and members of the various town boards and committees who are with us tonight. A special welcome to our new town treasurer and collector of taxes Lori Goddette. Lori, just wave so people know who you are. Welcome to Shrewsbury. Thank you all for being here and for your service to our town, and particular thanks to everyone who played a part today in clearing the snow away and making our streets and the parking lot of this school safe for all of us to come out tonight. We're hardy New Englanders, but even so, there were a few nervous people this morning about whether we'd be able to come convene here safely tonight. So thanks from Town Manager on down for all the hard work that was done today to manage the snow that we received. Finally, I want to recognize our friends at Shrewsbury Media Connection, especially General Manager Mark Sarah and the production team here tonight for helping us with our audiovisual needs and for bringing this meeting into the homes of our viewers on SGTV. Now let's proceed to the warrant, which was mailed to each of you along with a memorandum and attachments from Town Manager Mizikar dated January 3rd, 2017. If anyone does not have the Town Manager's packet dated January 3rd, there should be some extra copies in the front of the auditorium, right down below the stage here. Help yourself, there are some very important informational materials attached to the Town Manager's memorandum explaining the articles. May I have a motion with respect to Article 1, Mr. LeBeau?
I move the printed motion under Article 1.
The printed motion under Article 1 has been moved and seconded. This article proposes to transfer $21,350 from building inspector salaries to building inspector expenses within the previously approved fiscal 2018 budget for the purposes described in Town Manager Mizikar's January 3rd memorandum. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Pitney.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously.
Mr. Mizikar, any additional information on Article 1?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions or comments with respect to Article 1? Getting off to a quiet and quick start. Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 1 please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion with respect to Article 2, Mr. LeBeau?
I move the printed motion under Article 2.
Second.
The printed motion under Article 2 has been moved and seconded. This article proposes to transfer $1,241,000 from free cash to the Water System Improvements Account as described in the Manager's memorandum and the supplemental materials attached thereto. Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee also recommends Article 2 unanimously.
And Mr. Mizikar, any additional information regarding Article 2?
Mr. Moderator, I would just note this is a standard practice for the town. These funds were generated or not utilized on the fiscal year 2017 budget as a part of the Water Department's operations. And we are, the town has always been diligent in retaining the water funds with the Water Department for future use by that department. So I just ask for town meeting's consideration of this.
Questions or comments with respect to Article 2? Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 2 please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion with respect to Article 3, Mr. LeBeau?
I move the printed motion under Article 3.
Second.
The printed motion under Article 3 has been moved and seconded. This article proposes to transfer $30,000 from the Town Hall's second-floor renovation account to the sewer surplus account as described in the Manager's memorandum of January 3rd. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Pitney?
The Finance Committee recommends Article 3.
Mr. Mizikar, any further information on Article 3?
Mr. Moderator, I would just note the $15,000 of this is proposed to go back to the sewer surplus fund, $15,000 to the Water System Improvements Account where those funds were originally appropriated from.
Questions or comments with respect to Article 3? Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 3 please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes unanimously. Article 4, Mr. LeBeau?
I move the printed motion under Article 4.
Second.
The printed motion under Article 4 has been moved and seconded. This article proposes to authorize the Selectmen to file a Home Rule petition with the Massachusetts General Court to enact legislation transferring the former Glavin Center property on Lake Street to Shrewsbury Youth Soccer for recreational purposes and to the Town of Shrewsbury for municipal purposes as described in the Manager's memorandum and the supplemental materials. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Pitney?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends Article 4 unanimously.
Okay, and Mr. Kane from the Board of Selectmen, I understand you'd like to speak to Article 4.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Members of Town Meeting, in many ways, this article before you this evening is a culmination of the effort started several years ago when you approved a like initiative petition to secure a long-term lease on the east side of Lake Street and on the recreational land on the west side of Lake Street. At that time, the Glavin Center itself was winding down in operation and the town had a plan to use the childcare center as the interim library and then as the interim engineering area during the renovations of Town Hall. This evening, we're asking that you support the filing of an updated initiative petition, which would result in the transfer of the land on the east side of Lake Street to the Town of Shrewsbury for $1, provided the land is kept in agricultural and open space. And to move the land on the Shrewsbury Youth Soccer side of the field, the west side, for $1 to that organization. And to approve the balance of Glavin proper that would come to the town for municipal purposes under a restricted use appraisal. Now, a couple of people have asked, why would the youth soccer get it as opposed to the town? Well, I guess there's two logical answers to that in my mind. The first is, it was that association who years ago raised the money and invested in that facility to make it a great athletic location that it is today. So it strikes me as being fair that they would get the property back to them, considering they made the investment. Secondly, should they cease to exist, then it would go to the Town of Shrewsbury for the same like purposes. So I think we're protected with a belts and suspenders approach. Relative to Glavin proper, as you all know, we're evaluating two locations for a school, and this is one of them. And under a restricted fee appraisal, according to the Department of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, they would greatly reduce any value requested from the town, any price basically, based on that restricted use appraisal. That remains in process. So we would hope this evening that you would support this request so that we might move forward to the State House. Thank you.
Questions or comments with respect to Article 4, Mr. Lukach?
John Lukach, Precinct 2. I looked on the town's GIS system, and I'm wondering if the information on there, on these parcels, is correct because in that system, it says that the land we're looking at on the east side of Lake Street is zoned as Rural AA. And so if that's true, then I'm kind of wondering why we're restricting ourselves to agricultural and recreational purposes. I don't know whether that restriction would hold true in the future, but it seems to me that, why would we put a limit on what the town can do with the land when in fact, right now, you can do other things with that land? So that's one question I have.
On a response, Mr. Kane?
Well, the thinking to date has been that that is an area that's open space, has been open space for years, and would continue to be open space provided we bought it under an Article 97 protection that would ensure that it remained in open space and we would therefore buy it for $1. One of the earlier objectives and accomplishments supported by this town meeting was upzoning what we could upzone in that area when we weren't sure of its ultimate disposition, whether through lease or through fee transfer to this town. So I would argue, you know, keeping some open space in this town open wouldn't be such a bad thing to do.
Go ahead, Mr. Lukach.
Well, I understand that. Although in the past, we've taken recreational land and used it for other purposes, I guess my question would be, are you saying then that if we don't designate it for agriculture and recreational, then there's an increased likelihood or surety that the state would make us pay to acquire the property?
Oh, Mr. Moderator? Absolutely. The only option we have in order to achieve a dollar for this parcel, as we paid a dollar for 23 acres at the north end of this large parcel, as we paid, or shortly will pay, a dollar, I think $2, for two large parcels down on Green Street, is only when you agree to maintain it under Article 97 protection for open space. Otherwise, you're into an open market purchase and an open market appraisal, which I just wouldn't see in our interest for this parcel of land.
Okay, just one more, quickly?
Go ahead, Mr. Lukach.
Is the land acquisition on the western part, would that be dependent upon us committing to building a school on that property? In other words, is the state more likely to agree to this whole article if we in fact commit to, if we were going to build a school there? Does it make a difference?
Response, Mr. Kane?
Well, at this point verbally, it's been represented to the Commonwealth that we are in fact looking at that parcel for a school. You'll note the language speaks only of municipal purposes under a restricted fee. So I think that gives you your answer, John, that if we were to try to flip it then off to the marketplace, the Commonwealth wouldn't allow that.
Further questions or comments regarding Article 4, Mrs. McManus?
Hello? Sandy McManus, Precinct 10. Is the west side parcel going to be big enough for the school, should you choose that site?
The, if you look at the site that's identified, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead, Mr. Kane.
The site identified as a possible school site is actually close to 18, 19 acres on the west side where the Glavin proper building is today. And yes, at this point in the analysis, it's believed to be large enough to house the school.
Further questions or comments? Ms. Hollenbach?
Melissa Hollenbach, Precinct 9. I want to thank you for considering the open space and land conservation. It's something that we truly need to preserve in Shrewsbury and in Massachusetts, also the agriculture. The question I have is, do we have any thoughts about what we might be doing with some of the land as far as agriculture, open space, whether it would be dog park, you know, more playgrounds, or just leaving it basically as passive open space or solar panels? I mean, it's just, do we have any plans kind of in the back of our minds?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Kane?
To this point, the only discussion has been the possible use of one parcel as this possible school location. The other conversation has been simply to protect the assets of the soccer fields. When our kids played there, I think 2,500 kids a week went through that place. And we don't have another spot, nor the money to reproduce it. And on the east side, again, it was just to have the farming locally in the open space, simple as that. Now perhaps the recreation folks, if and when we ever take full control of it, will look at it for a grander scheme through a public process. Will be something we can touch on in the future.
Further questions or comments on Article 4? Mrs. Goldman?
Roberta Goldman, Precinct 8. I'm just asking a question about geography. Where is the Allen property in relation to this? And is this the property that you're considering for the school? I just need a clarification, point of clarification? Allen property in relation to this property?
Response, Mr. Mizikar, somebody from the STC, Mrs. Lass?
Thank you. Kristen Lass, Assistant Town Manager, Economic Development. The Allen Farm property, also known as Centec Park North, is off of South Street and Route 20. So that is southeast of this parcel.
Further questions or comments on Article 4? Yes, ma'am. You're in the shade.
Patricia Gannon, Precinct 6. I have a question regards to youth soccer, getting the rights to that. We have a lot of soccer fields in Shrewsbury, and I appreciate the money they put in the beginning. Will that be strictly restricted for soccer? If anybody else wants to use it, will they be able to get it by permit? I mean, we have a lot of other things going on in town. There's a lot of lacrosse, there's a lot of rugby. Things seem to be restricted here and there. I'm just wondering, will it be just exclusively for that?
Response, Mr. Kane?
Mr. Moderator, at this point, the legislation is drafted so that it would go to the Shrewsbury Youth Soccer. How they might administer that, should they get it, is something to talk about in the future. There's not necessarily a restriction today. There's not necessarily a lack of a restriction. It would simply go to them, as that's what we represented to this body how many years ago when we brought in the piece regarding a long-term lease. I will tell you, to be fair, there's no guarantee the legislature will direct that land to a nonprofit organization. The anti-aid amendment may be the excuse somebody uses to send it to the town and then allow the town to lease it to them as we are currently doing.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments on Article 4? Mr. Scott?
Steve Scott, Precinct 9. This may be a premature question, but on the 18-acre site for municipal purposes, would it be the intention to repurpose the existing buildings or to raise them and put up a school if we decided on that as a site?
Response, Mr. Kane?
To date, the analysis has demonstrated that the main building is not worth reusing for any purpose because of the agent type of construction.
Further questions or comments regarding Article 4? Mr. Hogan?
Matt Hogan, Precinct 3. I certainly have no opposition to the motion, but just as a clarification, if the soccer association ceases to exist, the land reverts back to the town, I heard you say. Should we be concerned about whether it continues to, the organization continues to exist but doesn't function in any real way and the land becomes dormant? Is there any protection the town needs for that?
Response, Mr. Kane?
Mr. Moderator, you know, we'll see what the legislature drafts. That's certainly something that, no doubt, when we testify, we'll cover. But I think it's fair to say that if that were the case, then we would seek to take it over. And it's that how that language is particularly drafted, to ensure that its purpose, the purpose is not just open space, the purpose is for recreation. So if all of a sudden, they become an irresponsible operator, we would take such action as allowed. But thank you for bringing it up. We'll make sure that there's a clarifying language.
Further questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Tom Looby from Precinct 2. Has the environmental assessment been done and has it identified any conditions on the property that we should be aware of? Especially will we be excavating the build of school if possible?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Kane?
Such analysis will take place as we go through that process, but right now, we're simply asking your permission to even kick this to Boston to get the overall effort going. No transfer would take place until there was a sufficient level of analysis to ensure we weren't getting ourselves into something we didn't know. You may recall that on the Green Street parcel, we specifically redrew a line when analysis showed an old dump. Thanks.
Further questions regarding Article 4? Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 4 please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes unanimously. Article 5, Mr. LeBeau?
I move the printed motion under Article 5.
Second.
Printed motion under Article 5 has been moved and seconded. This article proposes to accept a deed in lieu of foreclosure to a piece of property located on North and Prospect Streets for public street purposes as described in the Manager's January 3rd memorandum and the supplemental materials. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Pitney?
Finance Committee recommends Article 5 unanimously.
And Mr. Mizikar, is there any additional information on Article 5?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article is to accept a deed in lieu of foreclosure and also to transfer this land from the care, custody, and control of the treasurer or collector since it was taken through a tax title or a deed in lieu of foreclosure purposes to the control of the Board of Selectmen for public street purposes. This piece of land is at the intersection of North Street and Prospect Street. Back in October of 2005, a plan was set forth by a developer who had requirements to make such improvements at this intersection. So there, this article is closely aligned with Article 6. Just want to let Town Meeting know that all the work has been completed to date. There's no new construction to take place. Both of these articles are very much legal cleanup work that should have been done in 2005, but wasn't properly filed. So we're just looking to make those moves at this time.
Questions or comments with respect to Article 5? There being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 5 please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes unanimously. Article 6, Mr. LeBeau?
I move the printed motion under Article 6.
Second.
The printed motion under Article 6 has been moved and seconded. This article proposes to accept the alteration of the public street layout of the intersection of North and Prospect Streets as described in the Manager's January 3rd memorandum and supplemental materials. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Pitney?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends Article 6.
Okay, and Mr. Mizikar, is there any additional information on Article 6?
No, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions or comments with respect to the motion under Article 6? And let the record show that I have received from the town clerk a copy of a letter to the town clerk from the chairman of the planning board dated January 12th stating that on January 11th, the planning board held a public meeting to review the proposal for the substance covered by Article 6, and after discussion, the planning board voted to recommend the acceptance of the North Street and Prospect Street right-of-way and the passage of Article 6. So there being no further questions or comments in this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 6 please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes unanimously. Article 7, Mr. LeBeau?
I move the printed motion under Article 7.
Second.
The printed motion under Article 7 has been moved and seconded. This article proposes to transfer $464,963.35 from the Sherwood Middle School project to the Library Project bond proceeds as described in the Manager's memorandum. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Pitney?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends Article 7.
Okay, and Mr. Mizikar, is there any additional information on Article 7?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, as you may be aware, when the town enters into a long-term borrowing for a capital project and funds are appropriated by this body, they can only be used for those purposes. And should funds be remaining at the end of that project, Town Meeting has the opportunity to transfer those funds to a project for which a borrowing would be permissible under the same terms as the original borrowing. So at the closeout of the Sherwood Middle School project, we had this amount of funds left over. The Library Capital Project was the next major capital project in line, which we would also be able to borrow for 20 years for. So we will simply use the proceeds from the Sherwood project to pay off a short-term note and thus lessen the impact of the Library Project on the general tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Any questions or comments with respect to Article 7? There being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 7 please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no, and the motion passes unanimously. Article 8, Mr. LeBeau?
I move the printed motion under Article 8.
Second.
Printed motion under Article 8 has been moved and seconded. This article proposes to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey a drainage easement in and across Stony Hill Road to Hartford Realty Trust of Shrewsbury as described in the Manager's January 3rd memorandum and the supplemental materials. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Pitney?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends Article 8 unanimously.
Okay, and Mr. Mizikar, would you provide us with any additional information?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Meeting has the authority to grant easements on behalf of the town, and this easement was part of a comprehensive and special permit for the issuance of those permits for this development. This will take care of a longstanding or current drainage issue in the area, and I would request that the moderator consider having Town Engineer Jeff Howland make further comments on this.
Hey, Mr. Howland? Town Engineer Jeff Howland?
Good evening. Jeff Howland, Town Engineer. As you know, the point at Hills Farm is the 40B off of, or between Stony Hill Road and on the south side of Route 20. During the Conservation Commission's public hearing process, it was identified a drainage issue that occurs currently on the, on Stony Hill Drive on the, I guess it'd be the westernmost inner side of Stony Hill. Through the discussions and multiple designs that were submitted to the Conservation Commission to try to remedy the problem that occurs, which is an existing wetland and the existing drainage comes across Route, or comes across Stony Hill Road, surface onto the sidewalk, and then causes icing problems in the sidewalk, which is just, I guess it'd be north of the community mailbox. So through the Conservation Commission's hearings, several designs were submitted, and the best solution that was generated was to create a drop inlet on the development property and then to bring a drainage pipe from that drop inlet across the road or under the road, which would not be the town's ownership, onto an easement which is owned by the developer of the 40B. By keeping it private, the town will have no maintenance responsibility on this. The town will also... The town will also not be, it will not be subject to the town's MS-4 permit, which the EPA has issued, so therefore it doesn't fall under the town's jurisdiction. We felt, the engineering department, Conservation, felt this was the best option. There were several other options, which would have brought it into the town's drainage system, which would have brought then additional drainage as part of our MS-4 permit, and ultimately the town's responsibility, and we felt that this was the cleanest. It also, since all of the drainage associated with this was from the development, that it should not be the town's responsibility at all. So hence, we felt that putting the drain underneath Stony Hill Road and making it the full responsibility in perpetuity of the developer and owner of the 40B.
Thank you, Mr. Howland. Questions or comments with respect to Article Eight? Mr. Lukach.
John Lukach, Precinct Two. You say that the, this is the best solution. Has this been presented to the people in that neighborhood? I'm just wondering, is this a solution, even though it may be the best solution, is this a solution that's going to be completely resolve the problem with, in that neighborhood? Has it been discussed with the neighbors, and how do they feel about it? Was this ever brought before the neighbors? So two questions, really. Was it brought before the neighbors? What do they think about it? And is this really going to solve the problem completely, or is this just a partial solution?
Response, Mr. Howland.
Mr. Moderator, the, this proposal was presented to the Conservation Commission, and it actually is part of, which is the public hearing through the Conservation Commission, and this is what was shown on the approved drawings. Obviously, if this is not accepted, they'll have to go back to the, to the Conservation to get it relooked at. But the only other solution would be then to tie it into the town's drainage, which is what we do not want to do. And to answer the second part, this should solve the existing icing problem along that sidewalk.
Mrs. Lass.
Thank you. Just to supplement Mr. Howland's comments, this plan also went before the zoning Board of Appeals when the project was going through the comprehensive permit process, and there were a number of residents at that hearing as well, and they heard the presentation about this drainage going under Stony Hill. They brought to our attention that the icing condition on the sidewalk and the roadway, and the developer was conducive to designing this to alleviate that existing icing problem, and making sure the engineering solution was there when the development does go forward.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Deering.
Martha Deering, Precinct Four. If this is going strictly to the developer, what happens if the developer disappears or doesn't do the maintenance?
Response, Mr. Howland or Mrs. Lass? Mr. Medows, Town Council, Stephen Medows.
The deed would make this an obligation of the benefited property, so those owners of the unit would be responsible for maintaining that pipe for the benefit of the easement. So it'd be a condition of the deed, deed of easement.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Swydan. Wait for the mic, Carol.
Hi, Carol Swydan, Precinct Six. So just a clarification, are these individual homes, or is this a condo project?
Response, Mr. Howland.
Mr. Moderator, the, this is part of the 40B, not sure if it's a condo or an apartment, but it's part of the Point at Hills Farm apartments, the 40B apartments.
Apartment project? This is all apartments, so in other words, there will always be somebody that owns that whole property?
That is correct.
So they won't be, they won't be hung out to dry if something happens to this? So I'm trying to understand why this shouldn't be part of the town's responsibility. Isn't it a town-accepted road?
Mr. Howland.
Mr. Moderator, Stony Hill Road is a town-accepted road, but all of the drainage that's coming, that would be coming through this pipe, is generated either by or through the parcel, which is the point of Hills Farm. Hence why the town does not want responsibility of all, of the drainage pipe associated with a private development.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Erickson.
Patricia Erickson, Precinct Two, really, but I'm here for nine.
Too much information, Pat.
This is, this is in nine, so I, I felt I could speak on it. I was just wondering, I see a flared-end section at the end of the pipe that's going onto Stony Hill Road, and I was wondering where the wa, what it go, what the water goes into at the end of that pipe. I see some wetlands across the road, so it's coming from wetlands across the road to white paper, and I was wondering what was, where the white flared-end section disperse is the output of water.
Response, Mr. Howland.
Mr. Moderator, to the, the flared-end section is loc, it terminates within an easement that's going to be owned by the developer of the Point of Hills Farm. That goes into some upland, which eventually drains into the wetland to the west.
And what is this water? Is it rainwater or surface water that goes into this land that goes eventually into the wetlands?
Mr. Moderator, so the drainage that's coming off of there is, is treated stormwater that comes from the development, and there's actually some of the water that actually comes off of Route 20's drainage, which comes through that property. Both of them are being intercepted, running through a series of stormwater facilities before it discharges to this point, and then it will discharge under the road to that wetland.
So it would be basically rain or snow?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments with respect to Article Eight? Ms. Hollenbach.
Melissa Hollenbach, Precinct Nine. I actually live on Stony Hill Road, and this particular developer, unless something has changed, has not offered any money to the town, when we've had other developments that were proposed. The other thing is the neighbors have spent many thousands of dollars over the past year trying to fight this. The other concern with Stony Hill, that whole area down there, a lot of people don't realize that, again, because of the beavers, and we kind of banned letting them being trapped, we now have these wonderful flooding down near some of the railroad tracks, so some of our homeowners now have lakeside property. So the thought of, of having more water potentially coming to our area is, is kind of disturbing. The other thing is slowing down any additional development, 40B or otherwise into the town. We are having the Lakeway District be going, excuse me, Lakeway Housing going online pretty soon. The Edgemere is ramping up pretty fast. If there's any chance to slow this down, I think it might be a good idea, so I would actually like you to vote no on this.
Further questions or comments with respect to Article Eight? Mrs. Gonay.
Dating Gonat, Precinct Two. Question in regards to Mrs. Hollenbach's question. How would, if we voted no tonight, how will they slow down that property and the development?
Response, Mr. Howland.
It would not slow down the process. As there was other designs that were submitted to the town, into the Conservation, it would just have to, the plan would just have to be given back to the Conservation with that revised plan. And then, ultimately, the town then would become responsible for that drainage.
Further questions or comments with respect to Article Eight? Any other hands in the air that I'm not seeing? Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a two-thirds vote to pass, and since it involves the granting of an easement by the town, we will proceed according to our town meeting bylaw and try a voice vote first. If I am in doubt as to the sufficiency of the voice vote, we will immediately proceed to a standing vote. And tellers, please be prepared for a standing vote if necessary. Would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article Eight, please signify by saying "aye". All those opposed, please signify by saying "no", and the motion passes by a two-thirds vote. This concludes the business of the special town meeting. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I want to thank you all for your attendance, your participation, your respect for one another, and for your dedication to the government of our town. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Second? All those in favor? Okay, the motion passes unanimously, and the special town meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you and good night.